Same as usual. I don't, oh, there was my gamble.
Yeah.
Here we go. We're gonna start off by pledging allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a country and republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. At this time, Vice President Judith Garcia will read off the attendance.
Counselor Naomi Sabat.
Everybody needs to unmute their mics.
Counselor Judith Garcia, present. Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Present.
Counselor Leo Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Calvin Brown.
Hello?
Is it present? I can't hear.
Who?
Counselor Calvin Brown.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Damali Vido.
Present.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Damiel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Present.
What?
Counselor Roya Villaneda, present.
Present.
Counselor Ennio Lopez.
Present.
Roy's ready for all of us there on the phone.
Oh, here.
Can you, uh, is your volume on?
There?
There?
No.
She's muted.
Okay.
Hello?
There you go.
Great.
Great, no one hear me, great.
Yeah.
Hear you now.
Okay.
Okay. So, our next, um... We'll open up to the, we're gonna skip over memoriam celebratory resolution because we have none.
And we'll, we'll, we'll public speaking in case the city manager wants to make any remarks. City manager, rising.
I would just say that I bashed you to come together to make some emergency appropriations, uh, one of which is...
Giovanni, but there, there's some communication issues.
Sorry.
Can they hear me?
Uh, city manager, they cannot hear you, uh, because you're not on the call. If you wanna come here, you can talk to him on this microphone right here.
I would just say that my letter sort of speaks for itself.
Okay.
Okay. We'll introduce the communication from the city manager as... We're now closing the public speaking portion. There are no minutes to approve. We're gonna move on to communications from the city manager. At this time, I will, uh, allow...
Judith Garcia to read the communication from the city manager.
Absolutely. Dear Counselors, I am writing with civil requests for action. Summon an emergency basis to act to COVID-19 public health crisis. This is the first of what made the future similar communications on this matter. Emergency financial requests. There are several votes for which I am seeking emergency approval and waiver of the normal second reading. These votes only occur after adoption of an emergency preamble. That emergency preamble vote requires a two-thirds majority. First, I am asking that the city council approve and provide an express appropriation for both the emergency expenditures we made during the March, of March 23rd, as well as additional funds for food, hygiene supplies and other emergency needs arising from the COVID-19 crisis. The total amount I am requesting at this time is 300,000. This will cover the 50,000 which we have already spent, approved by DOR, on an emergency basis without appropriation, as well as providing additional 250,000 for our emergency COVID-19 fund to meet future short-term emergency needs. The second emergency appropriation I seek is a vote to pay existing deficits for legal services. During this crisis, I have had and will, I have had and will continue to have the need for legal services. There are complex legal issues arising from this crisis on a regular basis that demand outside counsel expertise. But I have been unable to secure any significant legal advice because we have significant outstanding liabilities with the firms that know the city and its labor base. The Ambrosio Brown LLP and Stoneman Chamber and Miller LLP. The Ambrosio Brown and Stoneman Chamber have significant outstanding receivables based upon prior legal work performed for the city during this fiscal year. Typically, these firms are more than willing to carry deficits to the end of the fiscal year. When we always obtain a supplemental creation for contracted legal services. This year is different. Even law firms are facing substantial problems. These law firms are therefore prioritizing clients that pay and they are far less responsive to those clients for large amounts of debt. So I am asking now for an emergency appropriation, both to pay and cover.
What? I can't hear nothing. What's the point of this? I can't hear nothing. Hello?
And cover anticipated costs at the end of June. Right now, the total owed to the Ambrosio Brown is 37,420. And the amount owed to Stoneman Chamber is 53,504. And 13 cents. An additional 12,000 should be sufficient to cover 300,000. Accordingly, the total requested in this emergency appropriation is 103,000.
Those talking, I can't hear under 3,000.
To extend deadlines for any payment or acceptance and to waive the payment of interest in deadlines for any... To place water and tools bill during a governing state of emergency to the full extent allowed by the legislative. As a behavior of the legislature, the legislature is considering legislation to allow extensions and this relates to... I assume this is being done to save time and avoid having to require meetings of legislative bodies during the crisis. Assuming the legislation passes as proposed, your vote is not necessary. However, I believe that having the city council expressly vote to grant the city manager this authority will have symbolic significance to our residents, demonstrating that this city council is fully supportive of assisting our taxpayers and ratepayers to the full extent allowed by law. Accordingly, I have prepared a vote on this topic for your consideration. I have attached to this letter drafts of this emergency votes. I have also included the necessary emergency preamble, which is required as a separate vote under the charter. Non-emergency requests pertaining to COVID-19 crisis.
Okay. We're gonna waive the rest of the reading and move on, uh, to the orders themselves. Count, Chair Counselor, the Chair recognizes Counsel Leo Robinson.
Should be the emergency preamble and then we should go to the late communication.
So we move for roll call?
No, no.
No?
We're gonna first just read to the order that, um, I introduced as an emergency preamble. And I'll just, um, have the stating that this order was presented in order to declare a state of emergency in the city of Chelsea. Thereupon, all following orders will fall under. So, at this time, uh, we are going to take a roll call vote on stating that there's an emergency, status of emergency in the city of Chelsea. The Vice President will call the, the roll call. And please unmute your buttons, your phones, and those at home can say yea or nay on the voting that we are in a status of emergency.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes?
We, so, when you're in the meeting...
When people, when you're speaking, I understand that we have to adapt to these new systems. But it's really hard to hear when one of you is speaking, when everyone's microphones are not muted during, during speaking. I did not get an agenda. I looked in the email. I don't even know what we're voting on. And the connection is very choppy.
Yeah, I can't hear crap either. Nobody's answering me.
I will...
I will, uh, just simply...
Yes, we've got you, Giovanni.
We hear you, Giovanni, but there's, there's a meeting happening.
Yes. One meeting.
I know, but I can't hear nothing.
If you want to turn their volume down, you'll be able to hear clearer.
What volume?
Oh, just mute yourself.
We hear you all clearly now. Damali and Recupero.
Yeah, so I turned the volume down to nothing now. We hear you.
We hear you fine.
Okay, but I can't he... So what, what are we voting on?
On the voting that there's a status of emergency in the city of Chelsea.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. I'm for that.
Okay.
Okay. So the clerk, the, the, the Vice President will read off the name. I'm going to say the name first, so that you can hear me and be united and, and Judith will say yea or nay. Just give me one, one attempt.
There you go.
Okay. I'm reading off the roll call. A yes vote declares a state of emergency in the city of Chelsea. Counselor Naomi Sabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Tom Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson. Leo Robinson, yes. Counselor Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega.
Yes.
Counselor Yumira Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Right.
Okay.
Counselor Ennio Lopez.
Yes.
Okay.
All good.
Thank you very much. The next one that we have on the agenda, Counselor Robinson.
Would be the late communication with the update on the change from the emergency request in the beginning was for 300,000. Now, the request is for 500,000.
Okay. Counselor Robinson has just written that the original order from the city manager last was to request an amount of $300,000 for free cash to the Health and Human Services Department admin to pay for COVID-19. This would cover, uh, matters including food, housing, and other medical supplies that need to be bought by the city in order to address this. The original order was for $300,000. We received late communications from the city manager asking that number be amended to 500,000. So if this will be sent in $500,000 from free cash to the account for the COVID-19 response. A yes vote would be to support that 500,000. A no would be to deny the $500,000. At this time, I will allow Vice President Judith Garcia to read the roll once again.
Can I just ask a quick question?
I would like to...
I think I can read it. Hold on.
Can you guys hear me, Counselor?
Counselor? Counselor? Damali Vido, I recognize you. What would you like to ask?
I just want to know, are we, in light of the pandemic and the emergency crisis, are we waiving the second reading requirement?
Under the, the, once we waive, once we adopt the emergency status, there is no second reading required.
Perfect. Thank you.
Wait, can I ask a question too?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero, yes.
Yes.
So that means anything we do now, we don't have to read. So whatever it is now gets adopted because of the emergency thing.
We don't have to do two.
Anything we do, we don't have the second read. So if we vote on it now, this is what it is.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's what, that's what Counselor Vido had just stated. That's correct.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Counselor Brown.
First part of the question, is the city manager present?
Yes, he is.
Yes.
Um, after my quest, maybe he can, um, go to the podium and speak to us in light what this $500,000 would do and who would be in charge of, um, spending money, um, and also going out to get the requested, um, resource that we need, whether it's food, mask, or whatever, who would be in charge of that?
I will, I will read off from his communication to answer that question.
Thank you.
It is true.
It is true.
It's to help meet emergency housing needs for Chelsea residents who need isolation. Uh, that's what the additional $200,000 is for. Those who have been declared COVID-19 positive and need quarantine because they've been in close contact with somebody. Uh, the cases vary from case to case. But, uh, we're trying to alleviate the crowded apartment situations and also small units, vulnerable healthers, or fearful apartment mates and such. So the additional $200,000 above the $300,000 was to address the housing crisis for those who are COVID-19 positive. And then the individual is that Health and Human Services Department will be in charge of it under Louis Prado, who will be taking obviously advice from emergency management and the city manager.
Is it possible, Mr. President, if you could just, just a little bit elaborate about what the housing price in detail is in? Is it housing, uh, is it helping housing tenants?
Hold on one second. If, uh, what the housing, what the housing, uh, market is right now. I'm gonna have City Manager Tom Ambrosino step to the mic.
Thank you.
He's back to social distancing.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'll repeat the question.
Yeah, so my, my question was regarding $200,000. You said housing, but I thought we were talking about food and other supplies. But because it's 200,000 specifically for housing, I would wanted to get a definition of what that meant.
So the original request for 300,000 was to really just cover supplies, food and cleaning supplies, which was the supplies we were buying to help people in need. However, now it's clear to us, we need emergency housing. The cases that are coming to our attention now are situations where persons who are tested and positively identified as having COVID-19 are sent home from the health facility because they don't need hospitalization. And they're only keeping people who have to be hospitalized, notwithstanding that you test positive for COVID-19. Those are people told to go home and recuperate on your own, but isolate yourself from others. We have many housing situations where that's not possible. We have situations where, once an individual returns to a housing unit and discloses they are COVID-19 positive, they are similarly booted out by their roommates. And so, we've had three of those instances in the last three nights. And we need a place for these people to go. For the moment, there is one emergency hotel operated by Mima in Lexington. As of tonight, it had room. Those rooms will quickly go. We are going to need housing. We're gonna have to secure it by renting rooms or another means is taking over, commandeering a facility. I made conversations with Revere to jointly take over the Quality Inn on Route 1. Very convenient spot for both cities. Easy transportation ride from Revere and we've, from Chelsea. And we've secured a transportation contract, special transportation contract with Cataldo Ambulance, who will transport to that facility COVID-19 positive cases that we identify. The money will pay for things like that transportation contract with Cataldo. The cost of commandeering the quality and the cost of any other housing that we can secure in Chelsea. The cost to operate the, these facilities will need operators, people to provide food, people to provide security, people to provide health needs. These expenses are significant and the 500,000 I'm asking for tonight is nowhere near going to meet the need. But it should get me through the next two weeks until you meet again. Does that explain it?
Um, it explains, um, the part about the housing. Um, yes, that was pretty clear and pretty, um, understandable. Um, regarding the original motion for 300,000, now will that money be given to the Human Services, Louis Prado? Would his, um, department be out in stores shopping for these necessary things that, um, go into this order?
No, Louise personally won't be doing the shopping. So we're just, we're putting it in an account under HHS. But basically, we are securing food and cleaning supplies. The overwhelming majority is for food. So we're executing contracts with large food vendors like outdoor to bring in large quantity of dry goods, which we will store and help distribute to pantries to buttress their efforts because the need is overwhelming at the moment. There will also be some small, uh, supplies contracts. But if I had to guess what the proportion would be, probably be at least three to one, four to one, food versus cleaning supplies. But we do have a contract with Home Depot for large quantities of cleaning supplies because when people are home and stuck in their homes, either isolated or quarantined, we need to provide them both food and cleaning supplies. Things like masks, bleach, other hygiene items, feminine napkins, diapers, formula, things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm...
I got a question for Mr. Ambrosino. Can I ask a question?
We're gonna try to keep this short, Counsel Recupero, so be short.
Uh, goo, good evening, Mr. Tom. I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. My question is this, you just said you got a contract for all people for the cleaning supplies. How do the people get the cleaning supplies? Are you gonna deliver it to them? Or is there a designated area where they come and get it?
It depends on their circumstances. If they're homebound, we are delivering it with volunteers. If they're capable of coming out, we are asking them to come to designated locations. When they pick up food, we have cleaning supplies with them. It's all being coordinated through, we're trying to coordinate a lot through our 3-1-1 system, but there are multiple points of entry through other nonprofits. Any, any way a need is brought to our attention, we're trying to accommodate it through our volunteer network.
Okay, so you're saying, uh, if the need, so if people, even though they're not quarantined and they're quarantined themselves in their own house, so they contact 3-1-1. What if they can't get to 3-1-1? Is there any other way they can receive whatever they need? If they wanna, if they don't wanna leave their houses, how you gonna bring it to, you gonna bring it to them? What if they can't get to 3-1-1? So where is there another way for them to get these supplies?
So 3-1-1 is not a place, it's just a phone number.
I know what it is.
And contact them through social media or the internet. If someone says, "I need food and/or supplies and I can't leave my house," we will typically deliver to the doorstep.
What if they can't have, they don't have the internet? How do the people, they, what if they don't even have a phone? There's many people that don't have phones. What do you do for those people?
So, I imagine there are some small segment of people who have no internet connection and no phone. We have, they can reach out in any way they can to any of the nonprofits in the city through a friend, a neighbor that can go out and walk down to one of these nonprofits and identify a person in need. And that will be, that need will get to us through all the networks we've set up. We identify that person and we will reach out to them and figure out how to get them what they need. I'm going to tell you frankly, we are not gonna meet every need in this community. Our goal is to meet as many as we possibly can. But we don't need, you know, there will be some people who don't have phones and don't have internet. They're gonna have, they're gonna have to communicate a need to us in some way, shape, or form. A neighbor, yes, a neighbor, a friend, but the neighbor on 3-1-1. Call any of the myriad social service agencies in the city, whether that's Roll Cover, Green Roos, Josie Collaborative, TND, Capic, and that need will get pushed to us.
I understand, Mr. Tom. I can understand your point, but when we giving you money, it should go to everybody. And certain people can't get it. I know you can't get to all the people. I understand that. So there's gonna be a segment of our city that won't be able to get it, even if it's a small segment. They're not gonna be able to receive it.
No, um, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. President, can I interrupt for a second? I mean, I kind of already did, but Giovanni, there are phone numbers. I'm working with the Neighborhood Wellness Group along with this pandemic response team, as well as many other counselors. There are phone numbers available.
I know, I know that, Damali. I know that. I'm doing this.
I'm happy, Giovanni, I'm happy to talk to you about it offline and we can talk about that. But I think that right now, for the sake of the meeting, we need to move on.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna vote for it. I'm just saying, I know there's all kinds of numbers. But you also have, I understand, a lot of people, they, they don't have phones. And that's the part that bothers me, there's people, they can't get to these things and they're not gonna be able to get it. And they're just as needy as anybody else.
I agree, and we're working on all of that. So if you have any ideas, we'll talk about it offline, but I think we need to move on.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to call the, uh, roll call for the $500,000 to Health and Human Services. A yes vote will support the 500,000 and a no will say...
Mr. President? President?
Counsel Brown?
Um, did you find where the money was coming from?
Free cash. Free cash.
Free cash.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Naomi Sabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Tom Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson. Counsel Calvin Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Yumira Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. Counsel Ennio Lopez.
Yes.
Seven favor.
Okay. The next order, the next order is the version of free cash to the Law Department. The amount of...
103,000.
103,000.
Okay. Do you want me to give them?
Go ahead and...
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hold on. Hold on. Counsel Leo Robinson wants to speak on the order. Uh, Counsel, you need to come here. No one will hear you.
I don't even know what order this is. It's not on the agenda. Jesus.
Yes, it is.
Not the agenda I just got from Fatima.
Oh, okay.
Just, uh, for the record, if normally takes one objection, I would send this over to the next meeting. But being this is an emergency and, uh, section 2.7, it requires four objections for it not to pass. I just wanted to make that clear on the vote.
Can you also?
I mean.
Of all this regards to the hundred and three thousand, and it's come from free cash, going to the Law Department.
For what?
For outside legal expense.
For what?
Well, I read about it earlier and.
Couldn't hear you.
You couldn't hear me?
I will write, I will read the communication to the City Manager that was included. The emergency, the second emergency appropriation I seek is a vote to pay existing deficits to legal services. During the crisis, I have and will continue to have legal services. There are complex and legal issues arising from the crisis on a regular basis that demand outside legal counsel expertise. But I am unable to secure any significant legal advice because we have significant outstanding liabilities with the two firms that know the city and its labor pool best, Dambrosio Brown LLP and Stoneham Chandler and Miller LLP. Dambrosio Brown and Stoneham Chandler have significant outstanding receivables based on prior legal work performed for the city during this current fiscal year. These firms normally are willing to carry these large deficits, but we always obtain a supplemental appropriation. Right now, the total owed to Dambrosio Brown is $270,000 and the amount owed to Stoneham Chandler is $52,000.
I can't hear anymore.
According to the full amount of request, the hundred and three thousand.
Mr. Roll Call? Okay. Counselor.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor.
I have a question too.
Hold on.
So what is, this is for to pay outstanding legal bills, what was for outside counsel?
That is correct.
So, so do we have, like, I'm sorry, if this was done in the previous city council or not, but I don't, I have no idea what these bills are for, what, what, what the work was or, or anything. So is there any information that we could have other than just, you know?
I would say that nothing that we do here has ever been done before. I don't recall in my years here, any legal bill that was submitted without some sort of explanation.
I guess my question is, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so I have no idea what this is, so that's my question. Was this something from the previous city council is what I'm asking?
No, I am on, I am online. Can I speak?
This is a city solicitor, Watkins.
Watson.
Watson. If my colleagues will suspend the rules, I'll recognize Cheryl Watson, Solicitor.
Please suspend the rules.
Hello, this is Counselor Zabat. Before we, before we continue, can everybody please put their phones on mute so we can hear what's going on? Please put your phone on mute.
Thank you.
We cannot hear what's going on if there's microphone noise. Everybody. With the dog barking.
Especially the person with the dog.
Please.
Especially the person.
Person with the dog.
Shut up.
That's me with a dog.
Hello?
My dog likes to bark, you know, what am I gonna do? Shut his mouth?
Yes.
That's me with a dog.
Move to another room.
Put the phone on mute.
Yes. Move to another room. Felicia Cheryl Watson, would you like to continue?
So if, if, these are not from prior legal bills, these are current legal bills. One, one refers to an investigation that ended up costing the Law Department or the city over $50,000. And another bill refers to property taken for tax foreclosure that the city wanted to keep, which was approximately over $40,000. And the rest of their current bills, we ran out of legal services. We had quite a bit of labor issues and specialty issues this particular fiscal year so far.
Counselor Taylor, does that answer your question?
I have a question too.
Wait a minute, Counselor Cooper, hold on. Counselor Taylor, does that answer your question? I can't hear Counselor Taylor.
Sorry, I was on mute. Sorry, that answers my question. Thank you.
Counselor Cooper.
Okay, my question is this. I just heard Michelle Watson say something about paying money for the city when they foreclose on houses. Is that, was that correct?
The payment was, and when the city went through a foreclosure process, they required outside legal services and that's what the legal bill is in the pursuit of this property. Yes.
So what?
Hello?
Yes, so yes, that's.
Okay, so that's, that's, let me, so when the city forecloses on people's houses, we have outside counsel?
Correct.
And we, I'm, did you get my question?
Yes, and the answer is an affirmative. Yes, that is correct.
You mean our own law department doesn't do that?
Yes, and the answer is an affirmative. Yes, that is correct. That is correct.
Wow. That's something new. I thought our own law department went into it and they foreclosed, but it's the city's department. We have to hire outsiders to do the city's job?
That is correct.
That's strange. I didn't know that. I always thought the city itself, but our own law department did it. It's something new.
I'm gonna let Vice President Judith Garcia take over because I want to take a moment to speak myself on.
Well, why don't I clarify what happened?
Counselor, I mean not Counselor, but Solicitor Cheryl Watson.
Well, in fact, what happens is the outside firm fronts the city the fees for the filing fees, which are quite expensive. And if we don't auction off the properties, we end up with a bill. So the city really doesn't pay for the services unless the city chooses to retain the property for affordable housing. The two lots that we are retaining happen to end up costing quite a bit of money because it was very difficult to foreclose on.
But I cannot, I'm sorry for interrupting, Miss Cheryl. I understand what you're saying.
But this process has been in place for 10 years.
Do it. How come my own law department doesn't do that?
Because the own law department doesn't do it because we don't have on staff a title examiner. We don't have over $500 per petition that we file in our budget. So the attorney's fees.
Why don't you ask for more money in your budget? So your department can do it.
Because we don't, that's what I'm asking for today. We don't.
I think the answer, the question's been answered to Counselor Cooper. You realize that our city does not handle this.
Yes, I get, the answer's been.
Okay.
That's fine.
We're gonna move on.
Still don't understand it, but.
We're asking for the money today.
Okay. I'm going to speak now that previously Counselor Garcia is now in front of this chair. Under normal circumstances, we would be able to take these appropriations, put it into a committee on finance and ask questions and have questions answered. Personally, I don't feel these requests is what I believe in the emergency status. Until we have an opportunity to be back back in normal sessions and finance committee and the counselors themselves who have questions can raise in an appropriate manner. I don't think this is emergency in my eyes, but I will put it, but if there's others who feel differently, that's fine. And the city manager feels that at this time, I don't think this is, falls into the category. And the fact of the matter is that in the last three, five years, we've added legal staff. Now I have, I believe, three attorneys there where 10 years ago, we had maybe one or two. And I think that in this experience, there isn't one law firm in the country that specializes in COVID-19 epidemic situations. And I don't think that we need to pay something, well, first, pay all these outside legal bills, without legal, without any questions from the, those who have to provide it and, and I, there I stand. That's about as much as I want to say.
Roy, can I ask Cheryl a question, please?
Judith, Judith has the chair.
Oh, Judith, can I ask the Solicitor a question?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Ask your question.
Thank you, Counselor. City Solicitor, I'm just curious, in light of what the Council President says about this not being an emergency, why are you bringing it up right now? What is the, what is the logic behind your timing? So, so actually, this should have been brought up before. And I want these law firms to continue to work with us till the end of the fiscal year. Clearly, they are looking for monies because they are also closed or clients are not paying them. We're just trying to make sure they stay to help us out, muddle through a lot of labor issues involved with COVID-19. So I'm hoping I still have those other lawyers to go to to help me get through all this that's been going on. Okay, thank you, City Solicitor. Thank you, Counselor Garcia.
Any more questions?
Read the roll call.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Okay, I, Counselor Taylor.
So, so let me just get this straight because I would like to, I would actually like to know more about something before I'm authorizing money. So if this goes through, if I understood Counselor Avellaneda, that this usually goes to the finance committee where the finance committee can figure out what's going on with the bills. But because we're in this situation, they're asking for it not to be, because we don't know how long it's gonna last. Is that, is that why it's being brought up now or, I guess, when everybody, when every other business in, in, in the country is waiting to get paid, you know, I don't know what the, I don't know what the rush is. Is, is, is it, is it that we just don't know when we're gonna be able to meet as a finance committee or? Is that the, is that the issue?
City Solicitor, would you like to answer? Okay, Mr. Ambrosino will be answering your question, Counselor Taylor. Give him just one second and he'll be coming here.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hey, Taylor, Mr. Taylor, I think it's because the firms need the dough. They need the money.
They didn't, they didn't call the, for paycheck protection.
So.
Everyone else?
I'll explain by giving you an example. So in the Dambrosio Brown situation, Jerry Dambrosio has been calling me for two months. When are you gonna pay this outstanding bill? And I basically said to him, Jerry, you always get paid. Just wait till the end of the year when we do all of our deficits, we'll put your bill through and I'm not gonna ask you for any legal work. So stop, don't do any legal work, because I don't need you for the rest of the year. That was the conversation roughly beginning. But now I realized I need some help. And he would be exactly the person I'd be looking to, to help in this, for example, negotiation with Quality Inn. And so I'm now in a position where I can't just call on him because he's got this outstanding huge bill and I told him, I'm not gonna call you. Stop worrying about it till June. Now I wanna be able to pay him and say, okay, now I need you, now I need your help.
So there, you think they're really gonna ta, they're, they're really gonna turn down your work from the City of Chelsea?
You know, it's just, I would rather, you know, I feel as though I need to pay this bill before I ask them to do significant more work based on conversations we had. But look it, if the council, I've made this survive. The council doesn't want to pay this bill now, I'll survive. The vote you took, the 500,000 was the critical vote. I'll survive without this. I'm just, I'll make do with the legal knowledge that I have in general.
So, so, so I don't have any problem with paying bills, but, but the only thing that I, I'm, I'm, because I don't know anything about this, I have a hard time, you know, since I'm on the finance committee, I'd like to see what's going on before we authorize paying money.
Well, you gotta give it to them. So might as well give it to them.
I will, I will say that this is an account that always runs an deficit. I don't think I've been here, I don't think there's been a year that I've been City Manager where at the end of the year, I haven't looked for, to cover a deficit in the outside legal services account. It always runs over because there's always legal issues that come up during the course of the year that require outside legal counsel's help. And typically, we just pay the bill when we cover all of our deficits in May. So that's how we typically do it. And I'm not, if you wanna have a, I understand completely the desire to have a finance committee meeting on this stuff. Like I said, I was hoping to get paid. It would be helpful, but if the council has legitimate concerns, I can survive without this. I can't, I couldn't have survived without the first one. I can survive another few years.
Well, I know, yeah, I mean, I know what's going on with the first one. I just don't know what's going on with this. So that's, that, that's really kind of my only objection.
Yeah, again, all I'd say is, it's running over on outside legal services. Usually because there's just a lot more legal stuff that comes up during the course of the year. And this year with Jerry, with some complicated tax title cases, not on individuals, foreclosing homes or properties that we were trying to secure for ourselves for people that weren't paying their taxes. And so it's just that number went higher than we wanted. As far as paid, I just see outside councils for most of our labor work. And there were some significant cases that involved her, particularly involving a fire.
Thank you, it's the City Manager.
Let's vote and give him the money.
Do we move to roll call?
We'll look at roll call.
Okay, we're moving to roll call. Are you gonna mark it? Because you have the document. Okay. Counselor Amy Zabat.
No.
Counselor Judith Garcia? Yes. Counselor Todd Taylor?
I wanted to go to finance, so I'm voting no.
Counselor Giovanni Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson? Counselor Calvin Brown? Counselor Calvin Brown?
Absent.
Absent. Counselor Demali Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado?
No.
My vote is no. I'm sorry, my phone was on mute.
Okay.
Counselor Calvin Brown votes no. Counselor Ymir Rodriguez?
Yes. Yeah.
Counselor Roya Villanueva?
No.
Counselor Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
The, the, we have six in favor.
The, the, we have six in favor, five against, the measure does not pass.
We're moving on to the next item agenda. The last one is the order introduced by Counselor Robinson regarding the authorization of the city to manage, manager, rather, to extend the date for payments of interest penalties and late fees on any excise passed or the charge or other bill during the period of the governor's declaration of state emergency, the full extent allowed by the law. Basically, this will allow our residents, homeowners, stakeholders to have a deferred payment during this difficult time.
With no interest.
A yes vote will support it, a no vote will keep the payment required as normal.
Do I have a motion?
With no interest.
Counselor Robinson? Like a motion, a motion to adopt this.
With no interest.
Please hold back your comments.
Counselor Naomi Zabit?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia, yes. Counselor Todd Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero?
Yes, with no interest.
Counselor Leo Robinson? Counselor Calvin Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Damali Vidal?
No.
Counselor Melinda Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Jamio Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Boya Villaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Ennio Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have ten in favor, one opposed.
Okay. That concludes the business in front of the city council, and I wanted to just move on to one to announcements and say some things from the chair. Um, obviously, I wanna thank all of you for participating, it was a difficult time.
I know we're doing, this is the first time we're doing this, it's historic, and we're overcoming, um, some technical difficulties, I, I wanna say specifically, thank you to Ramon and to Ricky, uh, for putting this all together, it was incredible, uh, for those who were not behind the scenes, we had a lot of glitches, um, including once again, some rainwater in our side room that almost didn't allow this to happen, but they came through and allowed this meeting to be, uh, broadcasted, so, and I appreciate my colleagues who are, uh, doing this for a first time and getting used to it. I also wanna say to my colleagues that, um, I know that, uh, we never expected this to be in this position, when we all decided to run and be here, um, it wasn't part of the job description, so to speak, but I have to say that for many of you, um, you've done a wonderful job, um, I'm seeing many of you, uh, working in the community, getting food for your neighbors, providing information, uh, and soulful, so, uh, I'm really proud. I also wanna say, uh, to the city manager and his staff, an incredible job to date, um, really, unexpected, but, um, we're lucky we have him, we have someone who's experienced, uh, not in what we're going through, but at least in recession, and also, uh, leadership position, so, um, his, uh, team has come through incredibly, and lastly, um, I know many of you have been on the four P M. calls, I myself call regularly, I don't announce my name, I just chime in and call and listen, and I wanted to say that, um, I'm extremely proud of what our community is doing, there are members who, of this community, that we normally don't hear from, not hear from, but don't get enough attention, um, the Ron Fishmans of the world, um, Mimi, who's come out really big in this, our employee, um, Father Edgar, our faith community, and the list goes on and on, everyone, the, all the nonprofits, um, it's great that, we usually take a role of leadership, our city council, and we think we're the leaders and we lead the charge, but the four P M. call and what's going on in this city proves that we have many leaders in this community, um, who are caring for our residents, and it's really, um, something to behold, and it, um, it really, it's amazing that in a crisis, we have what we have, so, I'll leave it at that, and it's just an amazing job, thank you. Um, if anyone else has any announcements, and I mean by announcements only, please, just information, um, that, uh, you feel that, uh, we should all know.
I have an announcement. Hello? Hello? I have a moment of silence, hello?
Yes, go ahead, a moment of silence for anyone?
Can I say it?
Anyone?
Can I say it?
Wait, hold on one second, Counselor, um, Garcia, you have an announcement? Wait, hold on one second, Counselor, uh, Garcia, you have an announcement?
I have one announcement before we go into, um, before, sorry, before we head into the moments of silence, um, and again, thank you so much, uh, Mr. President, for really thanking everyone in our community, and Mr. Tom Ambrosino, Ramon, and Ricky, who have made sure to, to, um, accommodate us for this meeting, I also, I briefly want to highlight the fact that, uh, Mr. Tom Ambrosino, every, he, at least this afternoon, at six P M., he communicated to the public key messages that are very important going forward, as we try to really flatten, uh, the, this pandemic that's going on, and as we all know, has been affecting our community extensively, so, uh, to this afternoon, when he presented himself at six P M. with his announcement, there were a few things that I want to highlight for members who were unable to watch, uh, his announcement earlier today, um, first of all, it, the, the next few weeks are predicted to be the most dangerous time for the spread of this virus, so, we implore our residents to take this crisis seriously, so to keep your family safe and to keep your community safe, please stay home, and this was a very clear message that Tom Ambrosino gave this afternoon, and we continue to repeat, please stay home unless you're an essential business worker, or you have to do an essential errand, like picking up food or picking up medicine, if travel is not absolutely essential, please stay home, staying home is what you could do, try to do it as much as possible to protect everyone, the other announcement is, as you can all see, members here at this council who are present, including city manager, we are all wearing masks, these are pretty uncomfortable, but they are very necessary, so, cover your face with a cloth mask, it's very uncomfortable and it's inconvenient, but it will protect others, and it will protect yourself as well, and lastly, we also, um, as Tom Ambrosino pointed out earlier this evening, the city has set up a contribution fund, for those of you in financial position to help your fellow residents of Chelsea, we encourage you to contribute to the One Chelsea Fund, which is actually managed by United Way, to make a donation, please go to the website, W W W, unitedwaymasspay dot org, forward slash COVID nineteen, forward slash the One Chelsea Fund, this information is also available on our city website, which you know is W W W, chelseyma dot gov, and you will find it under the coronavirus updates, and of course, if you need help in any way, whether it's food, whether it's supplies, or any other problem, you could call our three one one number, as long as you're within the city, call three one one, or you can call six one seven four six six four two oh nine, again, that number is six one seven four six six four two oh nine, and we will respond and try to help the best we can, and of course, if you do have a medical emergency, we ask you to call nine one one, and our first responders ready to assess, so, again, um, thank you, everyone, for the tremendous work that you're doing, and for keeping all of us safe, make sure to stay home, and if you do have to go out for any essential reason, pick up medicine, pick up food, please wear your masks, thank you, Mr. President.
Um, this time, I'll recognize, Counselor Cooper, you had a moment of silence?
Yes, a mo- I, I, a moment of silence for the Molina family, their mother just died this afternoon.
Counselor Robinson?
Holy oak, who passed away.
Counselor Robinson would just like to recognize the three veterans of the soldiers home, um, who served this country and have lost their lives to COVID-19.
I would also, Mr. President, I would also, um, like to add, Mr. Gilberto Rivas, a resident of the city of Chelsea, who also passed away.
Gail Harrison, uh, many of you know Bruce Harrison, who is a widely recognized C Y B L. coach, and also a city, uh, school department employee.
President?
All right, everyone, thank you very much, uh, treat.
Counselor President?
Yes.
All of you stay safe, stay all of you safe.
For all the people who have died around the world from the coronavirus.
Thoughts of everyone who's parished so far, or not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone, be safe, till next time.
Be safe, guys.
Thank you.